Hey there, all you filthy heathens. This is Kurt coming back to you again. Another long break, but you know, it is what it is. Just updating you guys on some stuff at the, uh, at my local school board. I think you guys all know by now it is Elk Grove Unified School District here in Elk Grove, California. And, you know, I, um, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but I did get, um, put on Fox News about a month and a half ago or so. And that was, um, that was kind of, you know, made national news that the, uh, Elk Grove Unified School District is, you know, at least was, uh, hiding, uh, sexuality clubs in, uh, in elementary schools. Now, um, I think I've said in previous videos is that I'm not concerned too much at like the high school level. Kind of, um, but even then it's gotta be, it's gotta be known. It's gotta be, um, something that parents sign off on, all that stuff. So it's, uh, you know, so that's kind of just some stuff that that's kind of where we left off before. We've, uh, since moved to a different location for the time being for these school board meetings while the district office gets upgraded and renovated. And so that is what it is. The, um, the issue though, is that now the video quality is bad. And then on top of that, something I've noticed is that the video quality is bad, but I kind of like that you can see the, the presenter and the, the, uh, the crowd, basically the audience at the same time. You can also see the, uh, the school board members at the same time as you see the audience. Something that the, uh, they did at the district office before is they wouldn't show you the reaction that you would get, um, from the people that showed up to the meetings during some of these more contentious debates. So it's a, it's a bit frustrating, um, that it's a lower quality, um, video right now, but I do kind of like how it is set up and just be, be nice if that was something that they carried over to the new, uh, school board meeting site, uh, once it's renovated. The thing too is now that it's at a different location, um, these school board meetings keep getting updated later and later. So this is almost a full two weeks after the most recent school board meeting that I went to. And it is, uh, I didn't get the meeting, you know, the meeting wasn't published until like a week after, uh, the meeting happened. It's usually like the next day or sometimes 48 hours, you know, you get like, people get busy and it's hard to update the video, or maybe the video doesn't update properly, but it's, uh, it's been happening more and more. And I think it might have something to do with the fact, obviously going to a new site and maybe just the upload is a little bit rough. Um, trying to get that done. But I think it might also have to be that these videos have been coming out and getting published later and later because, um, ever since the, uh, it became known that they were pushing, they were pushing these secret sexuality clubs in elementary schools. Then all of a sudden these school board meetings, they keep coming out later and later for the last few weeks. I'm hoping it's just the fact that it's a different site and there have been some technical issues in the past, you know, over the past month and a half or so, since they moved to that new site. So I kind of get it, but at the same time, it seems like it's kind of all in one. They can blame it on something like that. The reason why this is such a big deal now is because of, of Pride Month. So they did the Pride Month declaration, uh, back on the 28th. So they did it right after Memorial Day, the day after Memorial Day. And so nobody showed up except for me and one other parent that's a consistent person there. Um, it, there was a pretty good sized turnout at this meeting, but it was mostly because they were talking about, um, the VAPA program, which the VAPA program here is, I believe it's visual arts, performing arts. So basically art, music, theater, things like that. And how they weren't really being fully funded, which is kind of odd because they have all this money for, for all this DEI stuff and ESG stuff. Um, but they don't, they somehow can't fund, fully fund art and music and things like that. So I find that kind of disappointing. But going back to the Pride Month declaration, it's not just that it's Pride Month. In general, nobody really has a problem with some sort of Pride Month declaration. Fine. You know, if, if we want to make sure that, hey, we care about all the kids, even the gay kids, fine. I get it. Gay, trans kids, whatever. I, I get there being a declaration, but I had to call out the hypocrisy on, on these, uh, on these Pride Month declarations. And here is my first go at them. I went at them twice this last time, uh, pointing out their hypocrisy. So here you go. Hi, I'm not here today to speak out against this Pride Month declaration because that would be a waste of time. I'm not going to stand in the way of a vote that will make you all feel virtuous and morally superior. Pursuit of happiness is in the Declaration of Independence after all. And if being a hypocrite when it comes to gay rights makes you all feel happy, even for a little while, well then by all means. I'm here today to call out that hypocrisy. On April 16th, the National Institutes of Health, you remember them, the people we were told for years were the science. They put out a study showing that quote, individuals who underwent gender affirming surgery had a 12 fold higher suicide risk, attempt risk than those who did not, end quote. In March 2024, the Mayo Clinic studied the effects of puberty blockers on young boys and found mild to severe atrophy in their testicles, which led, which led one of the lead authors of the study to doubt the reversibility of the effects these drugs have. In other words, these boys were likely sterilized before they could even hit puberty. Another study out of the Netherlands, also in April 2024, showed that most kids experiencing doubts about their gender grow out of that doubt before age 25. This backs up a study that was completed nearly 20 years ago that showed 88% of gender dysphoric kids grow out of their gender dysphoria as a result of puberty. That 20 year old study also showed that nearly half of the kids who grew out of their gender dysphoria, yeah, turns out they were just gay. And that is why it is hypocritical for this board to be passing a Pride Month declaration. Based on the science, half of trans kids are just gay kids confused about their sexuality. But this board has been relentless in their promotion of kids maintaining their dysphoria, encouraging kids to take drugs that have a high likelihood of sterilizing these kids, or at least doing permanent physical damage. All this with the long-term goal that they should choose gender reassignment surgeries, which we now know leads to a 12 times higher risk of suicide. In the 2020s, in early 2010s, when I was in college and just out of college, the drugging and mutilation of young gay people in the hopes they would become something different than what they are, that had a name, conversion therapy. But go ahead and vote yes on this declaration, on this declaration, because after all, it's about making you all feel good about yourselves. And that's really what's important. Happy Pride Month. So as you can see, it is obviously something that they are pushing and it's pushing for all the wrong reasons. It's one thing to, you know, say, hey, these are, you know, we have kids that are, are gay, maybe experiencing some sort of gender dysphoria. We want to let you know, we, we want you all to be safe. We want you all to get a good education. We want you all to feel at home in your schools, which great, that's fine. But they're, the reality is, is that that's not what they're pushing. They're pushing full acceptance of something that is obviously a, a mental health issue. Um, but it's also something that you are, um, you are likely now that we have new studies to show that a, a lot of this is, you know, just, it's either, you know, half of them are, half of the trans kids, I use that in air quotes, trans kids. They are kids who are most likely, I mean, probably about half of them are just gay. And okay. Especially since gay kids, you know, it's, it, it hasn't really been normalized yet where it's like, oh yeah. But here's the thing, even straight kids struggle with, with their, their, um, their emotions and their hormones and stuff like that. So there's confusion around your sexuality, even when you're straight. Now you may never think, oh, you know, I, I kind of like the same sex. That may never happen, but it's still something that's, um, not the norm when you're, when you're gay. So it's still something that is like, you're still learning how to, how to figure it out. And so obviously you want to make sure you, you encourage those kids to, you know, be safe and, and be, um, be practical and, and, you know, let them know like, hey, you're, you're in a safe space here. You don't have to, you don't have to create a separate safe space. The school should be a safe space. And yeah, so I think it's really hypocritical for, for this district to be promoting things that, um, encourage people to mutilate their own bodies. You can't say with one breath, we want these people to be who they are while encouraging them to change who they are. That's not okay. And that's why I called it conversion therapy. You know, there was this big boogeyman when I was in high school, college and just out of college, um, where supposedly churches were, were drugging gay kids and stuff like that, which turned out to not be really as, as, you know, prevalent as was made out in the news. But now it's perfectly fine to start drugging kids and mutilating them when they just say they're trans. And I'm sorry, I, I don't care. You know, especially since half of them, based on, you know, some recent studies have shown that half these trans kids are just gay. So how is that not conversion therapy? So that's my take on that. Now, I did go on and I pointed out another flaw because I noticed going through the, uh, the, um, the pride proclamation that they made, I did notice some other issues with there, namely, what they are, what they are doing to the safe spaces for girls. So here's the thing is I've never been a big fan of Title IX, mostly because I grew up wrestling in high school. And I started looking in the news how a lot of colleges, because they were trying to keep up with, with Title IX and how Title IX gets redefined every different administration that, that takes over. Title IX was basically eliminating college wrestling programs and men's gymnastics programs in colleges. Because, um, I believe the Clinton administration, they were saying you had to have the same, uh, percentage of boys and girls or men and women at that age in, you know, participating in sports. So you had like Arizona state or University of Arizona creating a women's rowing team in the middle of the freaking desert while also cutting like men's gymnastics programs and things like that, so that they could meet the criteria there. And so that always concerned me a little bit about Title IX, but the, the principle would be tied in Title IX where women are, have equal access to educational services. And in the United States, sports are a big part of education, uh, here. So yeah, that, that makes sense that you want to have women have the same opportunities. It's, uh, but that's not what it is now. And, you know, the Biden administration has completely screwed Title IX. Lately they've gone back to what it was during the Obama administration and made it worse. So you can go online and look up what they did to Title IX. It's pretty, it's pretty draconian. It's, it's awful. But the, they've tried hedging their bets and saying, oh, they, no, we're not giving them access to locker rooms and sports and stuff like that. But we all know that's where you're going with this. So it's, it's kind of bullshit. But the, uh, so I made sure to point out with my next, um, comments, just how hypocritical they are when they talk about how we, you know, we defend women's rights and we defend, you know, we want to protect women and, and the girls in our, in our schools. We all know it's, it's, uh, it's a load of nonsense. And here's me pointing out that nonsense. All right. So now that you've all been able to demonstrate your virtue, I hope you're feeling better about yourselves. Let's talk about how you betrayed young women of UGSD with your pride proclamation. In February 2024, this board recognized March as Women's History Month wherein you stated, quote, "The role of women in history has been underrepresented in the body of American and world history." As someone with a history degree, 100% agree the role of women in world history is not talked about enough. And unfortunately, when it is talked about, it revolves around their sexual promiscuity rather than tangible sacrifices they made. With this pride proclamation, this board stated transgender students have the right to participate in school athletics, which I'm not necessarily opposed to. Now that part of the proclamation did concern me since I spent four years on my high school's track team in Idaho. I was captain of my high school cross-country team and I wrestled at a weight class where since there was no girls division at the time, girls who did wrestle tended, tended to end up in my tournament bracket. So since I'd never competed against girls in track, except for practice, I decided to check the times of the girls state champions in my track events, the 3200 meter and 1600 meter runs in Idaho in 2001, the year I graduated high school. Yes, I'm old, whatever. No. Now my best time ever in the 3200 meter was 10 minutes and 51 seconds and five minutes and 10 seconds in the 1600 meter. Lo and behold, I would have been state champion in both races that year, had I been allowed to run against the girls. Now, I'm not telling you this to pat myself on the back. Quite the contrary, I didn't qualify for the state track meet that year. I was a mediocre athlete at best. I have always been a mediocre athlete at every sport I've competed in, from running to wrestling, uh, to MMA. However, had I been allowed to compete against girls, I would have robbed young women of opportunities to stand out and have their names be recorded in history as someone who was the best at what they did. Having a daughter myself and potentially another one on the way next year, I find it disgraceful that this board would turn their backs on young women in order to promote and encourage mediocre men to steal their accomplishments. And for what? So that you can show up at the Rotary Club meetings, you can talk about how morally superior you are than the peasants you supposedly represent? This board likes to talk a big game about allyship, but you're not an ally to any group who doesn't serve your own political or ideological purposes. In historical terms, you're quislings. To recap, stop betraying the girls in our district. Let gay and trans kids figure out safely who they are on their own and focus on student achievement instead of what new group you can use to serve your own self-righteousness. All right. So as you can see, um, votes that are full of hypocrisy, absolute garbage. So the good news is, is that the, two of the people that I think are, um, well, what, definitely the worst person I think on that board right now. Uh, she used to be the board president. Now she's not. And she's, she's up for reelection this year. Um, and we have a really great person here in Elk Grove running against her, uh, Jaclyn Ortiz. I really hope Jaclyn, uh, you know, wins that election and we will see how it goes. I'm going to do everything I can to get Jackie elected, everything I can, um, you know, I'll, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to go, you know, I have, I don't think I've donated to her campaign yet. I'm gonna have to make sure I do that. I know I have. The other person that, um, is running is Heidi Moore, uh, in Elk Grove. I've already donated her campaign. I'm definitely going to do everything I can to get these two women uh, elected onto the school board because the reality is, is we do need to flip the school board. And so, and, uh, if you go back and you can pull it up, it's the, uh, May 28th, 2024, Elk Grove Unified, uh, School Board Meeting. You can look it up and you can already see, um, one of the board members, the board member that Heidi is running against, he is all of a sudden starting to flip on a lot of things. And he's making these more impassioned speeches lately, uh, during the school board meetings. And to me, every time he does it, it just sounds like a campaign speech. I think he actually wants to be reelected this year. And I don't think he's getting the support that he, uh, he thought he was gonna get. And I think Heidi has him a little bit scared. And so he is making these, uh, these more impassioned speeches. He voted against the pride proclamation this year, even though he voted for it last year and it basically says the same thing. So seems kind of weird. The, uh, so, uh, he's kind of, you know, one of the people that I would say is, he would probably be good if he had people like Heidi and Jackie on the board with him. He would probably be a lot better at calling out a lot of this stuff. But I think he's somebody who needs to go along to get along and I, I just, you know, there, there's no real spine there. And I kind of, on a little bit, I want to say I, I can appreciate that you're working with, you know, you have to work with other people and sometimes you have to be a bit more pragmatic and I get that. But when you, when you don't have somebody challenging you and you're making bad decisions and then somebody challenges you and now all of a sudden you're like, oh pivot, there's, there's a lack of consistency there that you can't have in a politician and school board officials are politicians. Don't, you know, no matter where you are in the country, if you are an elected official, in most places in the country, school board members are elected. You're a politician. Get used to that fact. So that's the, the issue here. So I'm really hoping that Heidi and Jaclyn both are elected, uh, this year. And I'm going to do what I can to help them this, uh, this year. And, uh, we'll, we'll get, you know, hopefully get them on there. I don't think that'll flip the board this year. Um, it'll probably be 2026 where we have to flip the board. Um, but we got to win these seats first before we can really flip the board. Now, um, the school board is still going to be what it is for the rest of this, this year. And, um, we'll see what I can do. Uh, I'm gonna see what I can do. I'm obviously going to be going to the school board meetings, uh, for the remainder of the summer and into the next school year. You know, my son just, uh, got out of kindergarten this year. So everything was good. Everything was all right. I did notice how some schools decided to wait until school is out before they put their pride flags up all over the schools. So school got out and then all of a sudden like, yep, let's put up the pride stuff. So there seems to be some, uh, some good stuff going on, like where it's like, all right, well, let's get all these kids out of school and then we'll do the pride stuff. Okay, great, fine, whatever. But, um, there's little victories and we, you've got to appreciate those little victories. And I think we're seeing them little by little. All right. So let's move on to something else. I'm, you know, now we got the school board stuff out of the way. I want to make sure that we get you kind of updated on some, some stuff that you've probably already seen in the news a lot. Um, obviously the, the Trump trial happened, uh, while I was, while, you know, between the last video and now, that trial was a travesty and I think luckily the vast majority of Americans, I think especially independents and, um, uh, independents and maybe the, uh, the Republican voter that's just like, I can't really bring myself to vote for Trump. I think they've all been like, no, we're, this is, this is garbage now. We are, we are fully on board with Trump. And you've seen it, Trump has had a bit of a spike in the polls since then. And, and especially in the swing states, you've seen him kind of jump up and, and get a little bit of, uh, uh, an uptick in the polls. So it's been really refreshing. Now it's like, okay, well, great. He's doing better in the swing states, but he kind of had a little bit of a, a, a good burst at the end of 2020 in the polls and that didn't help. You had, um, Republicans that were doing well in the polls in Pennsylvania and Wisconsin. And these swing states in 2022 for Senator races, governor races, Carrie Lake was up by like five points in Arizona for the governor's race and she lost. Now there's some shadiness around that election, but she lost. Um, so yeah, it's, uh, we'll see how it goes because those are states that they have all the shady stuff, all the stuff you can let the plane go by or the helicopter go by first. But those are the states where you are getting the most, uh, where Republicans can be polling five points ahead and still lose somehow. So there's that. Hopefully the Republican Party and especially Trump have learned that you, you, you have to have people on the ground counting the votes, monitoring the stuff and really keeping an eye on things. So we'll see how that goes, but there's been a, there's been a consistent uptick, especially since the trial happened, especially the, especially since the, uh, the verdict came through where you've seen large many donors come in and just write checks for like a hundred thousand dollars. You've seen, um, more people donate to Trump now and to the Republican Party in general since that, that, um, verdict came through. And the reality is, is that every time I've asked a, uh, a Democrat friend, what, what did, what crime did Trump commit? They either don't know or, uh, or they roll their eyes. So they roll their eyes, which means they either don't know or they're, um, you know, yeah, they just don't know. And then when they do know, which is, oh, he committed some sort of campaign finance violation. Well, campaign finance violation, uh, that, that was a federal law that he would have broken and you don't, you know, you don't try people in state court for federal law violations. So that's the, uh, that's the thing is people don't know why he was convicted. So basically everybody who is saying, oh, it's a jury of his peers and he got convicted and everything was on the up and up. No, it wasn't. There was so many, you know, if this, then this, and then this, and then this, and this, and then, and then he's guilty. So you had to, you know, basically play this weird chess game in order to finally get him to being guilty. And it's, it's an absolute travesty. And I think the, uh, the polls are showing that most people believe it's a travesty. And I think that most people are realizing that, that this is obviously a desperate attempt by Democrats because they don't like the person that they have to stand behind, uh, for, for president. And you're talking about a guy in Joe Biden who has three, count them, three instances where it's possible that he shit himself in public. Three now, three times. He did it when he went to the Vatican and it's even reported in the, um, in the news that, um, oh, why haven't we seen the president since he's come out of the, out of Vatican? Why, why is he taking so long to leave? And there were people, you know, there were people in the Vatican saying, oh, there was a bathroom issue. I mean, okay. So which old man pooped his pants is basically what you're, what you're asking. And then, um, and then there was just a couple of, uh, just a, I think about a month ago where he's walking, uh, Biden is walking to Marine One, I think. And there's always that press gaggle out there, you know, kind of asking questions and he stops and he does like the, the Beavis and Butthead thing where he's like, real quick and he kind of squats a little bit. He basically looks like, I mean, he, he looked like my son when he was three years old and he, and he, you know, we were potty training him and he pooped his pants. I mean, he, that he made that exact like, and then walked away. Um, and then now he, he might've done the same thing, um, only this time at a much worse place to do it. He, he was at the, he was in Normandy in France, on the beaches of Normandy at a 80-year D-Day memorial event with the French president. And not only did it look like he might've pooed himself, but then when the world leaders were supposed to be shaking the hands of all the World War II vets, and remember, we are, we are probably about 10 years away before there are no more World War II veterans. Joe Biden just walks away. And the French president's like, dude, where, where are you going? And you see the French president run back and start shaking hands. The American president's leaving. And so, um, yeah, you can, you can hate Donald Trump all you want and I'm not a huge fan really of, of Donald Trump. I mean, I think I made it clear, there's a reason, there were reasons why I supported Ron DeSantis in the Republican primary. But at this point, uh, it's pretty obvious that Democrats are weaponizing the justice system against not just Republicans, and they are against more conservative people. I mean, you have, uh, pro-life protesters getting 10 years in jail while these Hamas protesters are vandalizing places and vandalizing, you know, statues of George Washington and nothing happens. No arrests are made. You have, um, you know, uh, people, you know, putting, uh, you know, burnout marks on a pride flag in the middle of an intersection and they're getting, you know, hate crimes. Uh, they're being targeted with hate crime, uh, laws. And so it's not just Republicans, but they are specifically going after one person and that's Donald Trump. And that is not going to fly. Like we saw this in the Obama administration. We saw that the IRS was targeting Tea Party organizers with the IRS. I mean, the IRS is coming after you. Um, the IRS is threatening churches if they got too, uh, too political, even though Barack Obama's church that he spent 20 years in was one of the most politically charged churches I've ever seen. So there was a lot of that. So there is a, you know, we are at kind of this tipping point where our, our president is targeting, uh, his political opponent. And we've already seen that. That's happened in Brazil. It's happening right now in Brazil with, uh, um, Jair Bolsonaro. I think he, I mean, he was targeted for assassination. I think he got stabbed, I think, stabbed or poisoned, something like that. He, um, so there was that issue. I mean, he's basically a refugee, um, in the United States right now, I believe. And, um, you know, I mean, you want to talk about Vladimir Putin? And, um, you know, I mean, you want to talk about Vladimir Putin targeting his political opponents, well, Joe Biden doesn't really have the moral high ground over Vladimir Putin when it comes to that. Not anymore. So, and yeah, so that's, uh, that's what's going on at the national level. But the reality is, is that as much as the, the national level is a big deal, and it is kind of important, um, especially the foreign policy aspect, because we don't want to be in wars. And we don't really want conflict with other countries. The, uh, it is more important for you to be voting in your local election, school board, city council, things like that. Your, um, your state legislature. It is much more important for you to be following up with those people, making sure that you're holding their feet to the fire. It is much more important for you to be involved there than it is donating to Donald Trump or donating to even your US senator. It is much more important for you to be focused in on your school board, city council, county commissioner, uh, you know, uh, maybe city manager even, your local, your, your state representatives too. It's much more important to be focused in on those people than it is for you to be focused at the national level. Because we've already seen it, you can see it in, in the contrast between Florida and California. We've already seen that the states have a lot of power. So if you're focused more at the local level, you can get a lot of, a lot of good things done. And, um, and you can kind of counter any bad stuff coming out of the federal government. So the, the, that's actually what you should be focused on more. And then that kind of goes up. You, you can fight the federal government a bit more and when they do bad things. Now, uh, it doesn't mean you, you know, if you, if you're in a swing state, like if you're in Texas right now, you got to make sure Ted Cruz gets reelected. If you are in, uh, Pennsylvania right now, you do have to make sure Donald Trump, do what you can, make sure Donald Trump wins that state. Uh, if you are in, um, Wisconsin, you know, again, make sure Donald Trump wins that state. But the reality is that the stuff that has the most impact on your life specifically is going to be that school board election that you're not paying attention to right now. So if you haven't already, find out who is running for school board in your area. Find out who the current people on your school board are. And then make sure that it's the right kind of person on that school board that you're voting for. And that fifty dollars that you're gonna send to Donald Trump is a drop in the bucket. He doesn't need fifty dollars. He needs fifty million dollars. But the, the, the lady running for school board who just wants to get the pornographic books out of the library, that fifty dollars is five yard signs, is, um, a bunch of business cards that she can hand out to people who go, oh, this is who I'm voting for. That's, uh, you know, that fifty bucks goes a lot further there. And something that, that someone that knew that, knows that right away, someone who knows that, George Soros, because George Soros has been funding a lot of these DA, um, races. And that's why you see cities like San Francisco and LA get, um, they're, they're getting destroyed by all the petty crime, because nobody is, nobody is looking at that petty crime. Nobody is prosecuting these, uh, these retail thefts and these lower-level drug charges and stuff like that. No one's prosecuting those. So everyone just assumes all the, all the crime is fine. And that's the thing is, you see the difference is that in California, Gavin Newsom's done nothing. And he said, oh, no, everything's fine. And Ron DeSantis has gotten rid of two Soros DAs. And he's won in court to make sure they stay out. And I talked to my uncle in Tampa. It was his DA that Ron DeSantis first got rid of. And my uncle lives in Tampa and he's like, no, it's great. Everything's fine over here. So, um, but things, I, I'm afraid to take my family to San Francisco. I mean, Pier Thirty-Nine used to be a, a really fun spot. I would take friends from out of town and tell them you should go there. It's, it's a, it's a nice area to be in. Um, the restaurants are, are nice and it's just a, it's an overall good view, everything like that. But, yeah, I'm, I'm afraid to take my family to San Francisco now, because I don't know, um, you know, what, you know, what's really going on there. I know there's a bunch of poop on the street. That's what I know for sure. So. But keep in mind, it is important that the, that we replace the president in twenty twenty-four. But it's most likely just as equally, in fact, more of an issue. You need to make sure that that school board race that you're not paying attention to right now, you need to go pay attention to that. Your city council member or your mayor, that race is more important than the president. So make sure you're doing that. But that's all I got for you today. Uh, make sure you like, share and subscribe, uh, to my channel. And I'm gonna keep putting these out. And as the summer goes on and probably closer to Election Day, um, I'll be updating you obviously more and more on the school board and the school board races. And and I'll, I'll obviously again be following up with the national level stuff as well, just because it's, uh, it's fun. It, it's something we all have in common, at least here in the United States, but even other countries. I mean, most of the countries care about who gets elected president of the United States. So I'm obviously gonna keep up with that as well. But um, there are two great people here in Elk Grove, uh, Jaclyn Ortiz and Heidi Moore that are running for the school board that I want to make sure I put their name out there and let them know they are, um, they are hopefully the future of our school board. So like, share and subscribe, and I will talk to y'all later. Thanks, guys.